Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 23, 2016, a meeting of the Kern County Planning Commission. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Louie.
Here.
Mr. Babcock.
Here.
Ms. Garcia. Ms. Poole. Mr. Sprague.
Present.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Oviya.
Here.
Mr. Denny.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Thank you. Let's move on to commission member announcements or reports. Are there any? No? Okay, let's move on to approval of the minutes for June 9, 2016. We've received those in our packet. Are there any corrections?
If not, I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sprague, second by Commissioner Babcock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, let's move on to cases withdrawn or requests for continuances. Is that going to be Director Oviya?
Good evening, Chairman Louie and members of the commission. We have one case, item number one, specific plan amendment 84, map 101, zone change case 185, map 101. Floyd Hinesley by Porter and Associates. The recommendation is to refer it back to staff.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item one as presented by staff.
To refer back to staff. There's a motion by Commissioner Babcock.
Second to that referring to staff.
Second by Commissioner Sprague. Please cast your vote.
How come it's not a vote? Sorry.
Did we all vote?
I did.
Yes.
Did it post?
Uh huh.
Okay. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items number three and four.
The first item for the consent agenda is item number three. It is zone change case nine, map 64-7, Terry Snow by Delmar and Associates. It's a change in zone classification from E half estate, half acre to E half RS or a more restrictive district. It's at 2,000 Old Canyon Road in Lake Isabella. Staff recommendation is advise the planning commission to recommend the board of supervisors approve zone changes requested and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in draft resolution. Next item is item number four. These are zoning ordinance revisions, 2016A, revisions to the Kern County zoning ordinance brought forward by the Kern County Planning and Community Development Department, which is now named the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department. The proposed text additions and deletions pertain to landscaping revisions, changes clarifying that steam generators are allowed in the A, A1, M2, M3, and NR districts, and changes to chapter 19.108, nonconforming use of structures and lots, for the addition of a process for appeal to the board of supervisors. No changing zoning district classifications affecting public or private property are proposed. And a complete copy of the recommended text is on file and has been provided to your commission. In addition, we have provided you an addendum with minor public requests, and we have provided you with those responses. Staff recommendation is advise the planning commission to recommend the board of supervisors to approve and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. That completes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Director Oviya. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to have a consent agenda item removed and heard during a full public hearing in its normal order? No, seeing none, I'll return it to the dais.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to question Ms. Oviya if I could.
Sure.
So, yeah, on regards to steam generators, I know we covered this in the November review that we had that was so lengthy, but steam generators do pose a problem in agricultural properties, especially in almond orchards and vineyard and things like that, where they're operating and there are many oil wells within the parcel that's there, and so you have a multiple of steam generators offering which disrupt the farming activity and cultural activities and harvesting activities of those crops. And I've witnessed it. And I'm thinking, what does this do when you put this before us tonight to approve steam generators in the A-zone, A1-zone? What's the reasoning for that if we've already covered that subject? And is there a process that the landowner or grower can go through to complain about damage that steam generators are doing to their property? Or is it just a civil matter?
Commissioner Sprague, I appreciate the question. However, the Oil and Gas CIR did an extensive review, and we found no evidence that there are any impacts from steam generators that affect agricultural crops. If you were talking about the siting of steam generators, if it is a new well, then it would go through an oil and gas conformity review, and as you know, in tier two, three, and four, if there are agricultural crops, there is a process that your commission created that allows the surface owner to work through their issues. If it isn't on an existing well, then it goes through a minor activity review, and notification would be provided to the agricultural owner. Cyclical steam and enhanced oil recovery is a completely closed system. They are still required to mitigate their air impacts through the new wells, and we do believe that what you have proposed is sufficient. When these changes were brought to your commission, they were included as a minor activity review. However, wording was left in these other sections, and we now have an inconsistency in the ordinance. We are not allowed to have an inconsistency in the ordinance, and we do believe that making this change was fully covered in the environmental impact report.
Explain to me the inconsistency in the ordinance.
Right now, it's supposed to be a minor activity review. That's what your commission approved. However, the word steam generator was still left in the conditional use permit section.
Okay. And the reason I'm bringing it up is mostly because of the sightings of these units within multiple oil wells within a parcel property that disrupt the farming activity. And it actually cost the landowner and the grower money to try to farm around them and to remodel his irrigation system in many cases to accommodate the mineral right person or the person that's doing the pumping out of the oil well or steaming out of the oil well. It just complicates the farming operation on the surface. And so that's why I'm bringing it up, because is there a way that we can have some sort of discussion with the surface owners if they have a problem with the sightings of those to where they could come in and schedule a meeting with the operators or something like that to try to compensate for that or re-site some of those locations?
Commissioner Sprague, the board of supervisors has already designed a process. That process is not before your commission today.
No, I understand that. I'm just asking a question.
And so, right, and so the oil and gas process for new wells, which these steam generators would be put on, in that case, you have already instituted a process for the ag owners to hold up the process for, you know, the 120 days. So there is already a process, people are already using that process. If there is already existing well, then there is already either an existing agreement or otherwise a civil matter between the, if it's an existing well, and we don't have jurisdiction over that.
Okay.
I think it's a good clarification that this change today does not change the process that you have put in place, which under an oil and gas conformity review and a tier two where there's prime farmland, there is a whole process that agricultural service owners are allowed to go through. So there's no change to that process.
Okay. Well, again, I was wondering, it's crossed my mind after reading this material, and I was looking for the reasoning.
I think that's a good clarification. It does not change the rights of the surface owners to hold up a new well.
Good. I have a second question that is revolving around landscape drainage waters and trying to customize systems to save, retain water, and use it on landscaping. And I did talk to Mr. Denny a little bit yesterday about that, but up and down the state, as you know, I'm involved in water issues with the state water board and the drainage control board and also with a lot of other planning commissioners. In reviewing this and putting together systems that are conservative but not that expensive, one thing that a lot of the counties are requiring are on-surface water drainage to capture it is underground cisterns or sump types that are lined and ways of capturing that water and pumping it back into the landscape through a drip system or something like that to conserve the water and then recharge to groundwater. And I'm not sure that we covered all that in this landscape ordinance. I haven't specifically seen it all, but are we at that point to where we could work on that so that we had economical systems in place with commercial industrial development department facilities like on the parking lots and things like that? Mr. Commissioner Babcock brought up, I think when I asked the question a couple of years ago, that there's parking lot materials out there that capture rainwater and capture drainage surface waters and then put it into the underground aquifers through the asphalt or that types of materials. So I don't know if that's available and if it's comparable to actual asphalt where it would be graded and then runoff into a cistern. I'm not sure. I'm just bringing an idea forward to see how we could conserve more water and then utilize it on the existing landscape that's being developed. So, again, I don't know.
So Commissioner Sprague, those are all great ideas. First of all, there's nothing in this ordinance that forbids someone from offering that. This ordinance does not mandate it. I have no direction that we are moving in a direction where we are raising the cost of commercial and industrial projects by mandating those types of things yet. We certainly will bring your ideas forward to the board of supervisors. However, there is a significant cost to that. And then the third piece to that is the drainage requirements in certain parts of the county in regards to the velocity and capture of those. So we do have projects that will be coming before your commission in the near future, such as the Grapevine project that is proposing a comprehensive, they call it low-impact drainage. And we are attempting to resolve the issues that have been brought up by public works in regards to is there enough of that capture that it reduces the flows that normally would go into a sump? So I've been educated over the past six months that there are actually conflicts between low-impact drainage systems and the conventional capture of high-flow flood. But I can assure you that we do have some large-scale projects that are coming forward on a case-by-case basis that are absolutely incorporating those kinds of proposals. And I hope that through those projects, we can actually come up with some standards in public works that would allow those to be more easily implemented.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I think those are the wave of the future. However, at this point, we haven't fully resolved the tension between those engineering issues.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Oviya.
Thank you.
Thank you for those questions, Commissioner Sprague, and the answers, Director Oviya. Would any of the commissioners like to have item three or four removed from the consent agenda and heard in its normal order? No? Is there a motion?
If there's no comments, I would make a motion to approve items number two and three.
Three and four?
Three and four, excuse me.
Motion by Commissioner Sprague.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Babcock. Please cast your votes.
Three ayes, two absent.
Thank you. And it looks like there's no right to appeal on those. So let's move on to public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the commission on any matter, not on this agenda, and over which the commission has jurisdiction. Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission? Seeing none, let's move right on to public hearing number two. Is that Mr. Murphy or Mr. Denny? Mr. Denny.
I'll be taking care of this from Commissioner Louie. This particular item is a request for a change in zone classification for a project in the Willow Springs area west of Rosemond. Essentially, what we're dealing with is a two-and-a-half-acre parcel that is zoned E two-and-a-half, RS, MH. It's an estate lot, two-and-a-half acre minimum lot size, allows for the keeping of mobile homes, or mobile homes that are made in the last 30 years, and also allows for the keeping of hoofed animals at a ratio of one per quarter acre. This particular project site also has a dwelling on it along with corrals in addition to cargo containers. And cargo containers are not allowed in the E district without approval of a conditional use permit. So the applicant was cited. She went to a violation hearing, and at that violation hearing, the hearing officer did determine that there was a violation, in fact. And the hearing officer was able to make the requisite findings to instruct staff to continue processing the request, subject to stipulations. However, the request that was to be processed could not be a conditional use permit, which is typically the way that cargo containers are dressed. And the reason why? This property is designated 7.1, which is an industrial designation in the Willow Springs Plan. So essentially, the residential zoning and the industrial map code would not allow your commission to make all the findings for a conditional use permit. So the applicant was left with the option of a general plan amendment and a zone change or conceivably just a zone change. They could rezone it to industrial so they could keep the cargo containers, but that would then render the house legal nonconforming until an industrial business was established on the property. The applicant did not want to do this. She has a residence on the property, animals, it's not an industrial use, and so what she's opted to do is to file for a zone change to the A-zone district. The A-zone district is the least intensive zone district in the zoning ordinance. It does allow homes. It is consistent with every map code. It also allows for the keeping of hoofed animals, which she presently enjoys on the property. So she's filed for a zone change to the A district, and in doing so, we notified the surrounding property owners, county agencies, anyone who might be interested in this particular case, and solicited public comments. We got three comments, two of them from the public works department, both the floodplain management section and the building and development division. Both of them essentially had no comment with the project, and that was because everything on the property has already been permitted, with the exception of the cargo containers. We did get comments from an adjacent property owner, Gerald Schoenfeld, who submitted two letters, one of them which was in the original staff report prepared, and one of them that is in an addendum that was handed out to your commission tonight. And in that addendum, Mr. Schoenfeld contends that should your commission recommend approval to the board, and the board approved, he believes that the changing of the property to the A-zone will have some negative impacts on his property. Essentially, he believes that because they have a shared well, if the property is rezoned agricultural, that the applicant will then consume all the water that they have or the bulk of the water. There is also belief that the applicant will then have the ability to put more animals on the property and consume more water, and because the property is in a flood zone, that should there be flooding, it will take the manure from these animals and then contaminate the well. Staff has looked at these concerns, both in the original staff report and the addendum, and provided responses to your commission on these issues. We don't believe, while we understand the adjacent property owners' concerns, we do believe that with adherence to existing requirements, this should not pose an issue. We do note in the staff report that there have been two similar requests, I believe, approved in the immediate area. Let's see, we had one that was considered and approved in 2009 that was a half-mile southeast. And we had another one on another parcel that was three-quarters of a mile southeast. In both instances, they did zone change from the E two-and-a-half RS district to the A district on parcels that were approximately two-and-a-half to five acres in size. And in both instances, in both instances, these properties were industrially designated, just like this parcel. So with that, staff has finished its evaluation of the project, and while the adjacent property owner has some concerns, staff believes that the project is consistent with the necessary findings. Implementation of the request will demonstrate consistency between the project site zoning and its specific plan map code, which is required by law. It is consistent with the goals and policies of the Willow Springs specific plan. Approval of the request would allow the applicant to retain their existing type of development without rendering it nonconforming, and would also provide her with the ability to obtain the necessary building permits to abate the violation and keep the cargo containers on her property so that she could use them for the personal storage of materials or items for the horses. So in conclusion, staff believes that the request sufficiently demonstrates compliance and is advising your commission to recommend to the board of supervisors to approve the zone change as requested and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. Now, before I started reading this case, I have it filed in my book as item number three on the agenda, which you approved on the consent agenda, but I think it's actually listed as item number two on the agenda.
Yes, we would like to correct the record that it is item number two on your staff report and item two on the agenda. In addition, I would like to clarify for the record, I have more extensive information about the Antelope Valley adjudication than Mr. Denny. I would like to clarify that inside the Antelope Valley adjudication, this property was classified as a single-family residence, and they have, from my understanding, three acre feet a year of allocation, and their wells are monitored. Changing this to agriculture will not give this property any more water. So this property on a shared well receives three acre feet. Whatever this property owner can do with a total of three acre feet of her proportionate allocation, she can do, but there is nothing in that adjudication that allows the fact that the board of supervisors changes this to agricultural use that gives them any more water. So we believe that based on that, this is an appropriate action. We appreciate the concerns of the neighbor. However, that is a groundwater lowering situation, and she does have rights under that adjudication to a certain proportion of the water. However, she does not have the right to more water. Therefore, changing it to agriculture will not provide for a commercial use. And based on that, and the intention of this, of course, is just to accommodate this situation.
Two cargo containers.
Two cargo containers. We do believe this is an appropriate action by your commission. That completes staff's presentation, and we're available for questions and any public comments.
It looks like we have Commissioner Babcock in the queue. Commissioner Babcock?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just a clarification from staff. The estate half acre is the same or similar as agriculture?
Commissioner Babcock, through the chair. No. An estate two-and-a-half acre is not, an estate E two-and-a-half RS is, and that is what she has. She has E two-and-a-half RS MH. So with the RS, they have the ability to keep hoofed animals like cattle, goat, and sheep at one per quarter acre.
Okay.
They also have the ability to have crops grown on the property for their own personal consumption.
Okay.
And that is a similar agricultural use when you add that RS in there with the E two-and-a-half district.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Babcock. Commissioner Sprague, okay, doesn't look like you have anything. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public portion of this hearing on this item. Is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to come forward and address the commission first? Please approach the microphone. And can you please state your name for the record?
Renita Wright.
Thank you.
And my address?
No, we just needed your name for the record. And feel free to make any comments that you would like, and assuming you're the applicant, so you're in support of the staff's recommendation.
Yes. I agree with what they have in the agenda here. I don't plan to add any more animals or do anything. All I'm trying to do is just get the C containers and everything up to the legal stuff that I need to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh huh.
All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition of staff's recommendation? Anyone here who wants to speak in opposition? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public portion.
In favor.
Is there anyone in favor? Excuse me. Anyone in favor? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public portion of this hearing and return it back to staff. Staff, any more comments?
The only comment would be, it's our understanding that the property was acquired. There was some misinformation provided with the ability to, what was required for cargo containers as far as building permit, this happens occasionally, and the applicant has worked with county staff to try and resolve the issue in a timely manner as possible.
Okay, thank you. And I'll return it to the dais for Commissioner comments. Are there any?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no comments, then I would like to make a motion to...
Before you make your motion, can I ask a quick question?
You can ask a long question if you'd like to.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Denny, I'm curious to know, in this particular case, where the agricultural zoning designation, you have to have minimum of 20 acres, right? From what I read from the staff report?
When you subdivide a parcel in the A-zone, you are to create parcels of 20 acres.
You have to have 20 acres minimum?
When you subdivide a parcel.
When you subdivide it?
In this case, this particular parcel obviously has less than 20 acres, so it would be substandard in size with regard to that. It would bear resemblance to what we refer to as a home site parcel, which are generally anywhere from one acre to five acres in agriculturally zoned.
And having less than the 20 acres is something that's not uncommon, to have an agricultural designation?
They're very common for home site parcels, which retain the home for a farming operation. The largest or main concern, I guess, would be, is it physically prevents it from being subdivided in the future. It will not be allowed to be subdivided any smaller than what it presently exists.
If they did want to subdivide it, they'd have to come back and change the zoning.
They would have two choices. They would either have to change the general plan to a residential map code, which would be an amendment from industrial to residential, along with a zone change, and then probably a parcel map, or they'd have to do a zone change to industrial in order to create smaller industrial-sized parcels.
Got it. Thank you. That was all.
Okay. My motion would be that this commission recommend to the board of supervisors to approve the zone change as requested and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Babcock?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sprague. Please cast your votes.
Three ayes and two absent.
3 ayes and 2 absent.
All right. And that one looks like it has no notice to write of appeal either. And so let's move on to adjournment. Our next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 14, 2016, 7:00 p.m. in these board chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Commissioners, I apologize that at board member announcements, I forgot that you moved them up. I would like Mr. Murphy to go over. We are having a workshop, a public workshop for the Grapevine project. And I'd like Mr. Murphy just to take one minute to make sure that you're apprised of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oviat. This coming Tuesday, I believe, is the 28th. At 6:00 p.m., we will be holding a public workshop to present information related to the Grapevine project at the Public Services Building, which is where our offices are located, at 2700 M Street. The purpose of this meeting will be to provide information to the public about the project specifically, detail, and inform them how they can go about reviewing the environmental document and providing some of that basic information to facilitate public input. We will be taking comments from various residents or interested parties that want to provide information, which will lay the foundation ultimately for finalization of the environmental document and ultimately consideration of that project by your commission and the Board of Supervisors later this calendar year. But the meeting itself is set for 6:00 p.m. this coming Tuesday at the Public Services Building.
And Mr. Murphy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that we have put on the notice of availability a Planning Commission in September for the Planning Commission.
The environmental document identified, September 8, is the target date to have this project considered by your commission.
Thank you. All right. Any comments or follow-up by commissioners? No? All right. I already noticed our next Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.